All right, so now being 5:45, I'll call the June 21st meeting of the Board of Selectment Order pursuant to Governor Baconer's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law that impose certain limitations on the number of people gathering in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. The information on the the meeting has been posted on the town's website. The Zoom address, there's also ways to call in for people that would prefer to do that. So at this time, there'll be no in-person attendance of members of the public that are permitted. We're going to make every effort to entertain and ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. So let's get down to business. We've got a pretty full agenda tonight. So our first item is to appoint Jason Frazier to Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Jason, I see you're with us here tonight.
I am. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
So you're doing this willingly?
Absolutely.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so any discussion on appointing Jason Frazier to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee?
Only that we're glad to see him on there.
Absolutely.
Glad to do it.
All right, Jason, so is this until the next election cycle, Liz? Or is this longer than that?
I defer to them on that. I'm assuming is it the next election?
Yes, yes, this would be fulfilling Mike Anton's commitment, which would have been up next May.
Okay, so this would be effective then through May 21st of 2022.
Beautiful. Okay, I'll make the motion that we appoint Jason Frazier as a representative to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, effective immediately. Is that correct? Immediately? Okay, until until May 21st, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mark. Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Thank you, Jason, very much. It's awfully good of you to serve.
Do you also need a vote from Lucas at all?
Um, yes, how about you, Lucas, too? Would are you in favor of Jason serving the Mike's unexpired term?
Yes, I am, of course. It will be a pleasure.
Beautiful, okay. So roll call vote, Lucas?
Yes.
Beautiful, okay, so we've checked all the boxes, so I think we're good to go. All right, thank you both very much. Thanks for joining us.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay, warrants paid. Bree, you sent that document to us. Does it require any review? Okay, what was the total, Bree? Okay, great, to various for various bills.
There's local computer ever saw Comcast. I just know every month, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks for letting us know. No actions required on that, right? We've already signed the warrants. Perfect. Okay, all right, so our next item is a reappointment for fiscal year 2022. These are board committee members to be appointed by by our board. And it's a pretty short list, so I'll, let's see. I printed everything out. Let's see. All right, I can't find the list.
I can read it if you like, Christine.
John, that'd be beautiful if you could read the list.
So I'll go down, starting with Dave Alberti to the Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate, June 30th, 22. Vicky Alberti, Open Space Committee, June 30th, 24. Joan Burke, Council on Aging, June 30th, 21. Nancy Butler, Community Preservation Committee, June 30th, 21. Rick Burnett, Conservation Commission, June 30th, 22. Rick Burnett, Community Preservation Committee, June 30th, 22. David Chandler, Community Preservation Committee, June 30th, 22.
Sorry to interrupt, John. I think that one should actually read Jason Shepard and should read 2024.
Instead of David Chandler?
Yes.
What's the name again?
Jason Shepard.
Shepherd, okay.
And Nancy Butler is until 2022, John?
Um, let's see, 21 I have on here.
It should be 2022.
Okay.
We're doing an Excel spreadsheet instead of that database. I had to do a cut and paste.
Okay. Next one is Stuart Chase Historic District Committee Commission, June 30th, 22. Robert Doucette, Harry Jason Jr., Park Study and Development, June 30th, 22. Jeffrey Haas, Recreation Committee, June 30th, 22. Linda Letty, Conservation Commission, June 30th, 22. Gavin Murphy, Open Space Committee, June 30th, 22. Charles Nicholson, Historic District Commission, June 30th, 22. Eric Player, Recreation Commission, June 30th, 22. Katrina Player, Recreation Committee, June 30th, 22. Jane Schultz, Historical Commission, June 30th, 22. Jane Schultz, Community Preservation Committee, June 30th, 22. Ethan Stiles, Zoning Board of Appeals, June 30th, 22. Alan Wheelock, Wage and Personnel Board, June 30th, 22. And Alan Wheelock, Open Space Committee, June 30th, 23. That's my list.
All right, I'll make a motion that we make those annual appointments as as written or as read by John with the two amendments, Nancy Butler's term to 2022 and Jason Shepard 2022, as John also indicated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Russo. Okay, all in favor, a roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes? All right, all right, so the next item on our agenda is vote to consider amending selected BOS Operating Principle 12, which had to do with making a distinction between working meetings and.
Actually, we had the tax title land next.
Okay.
And actually, forgive me, can I just go back to appointments for a moment? Somewhere along the way, I think we have to remind these people that they need to get sworn in before their next meeting. We've had a more than one incident where it's a bit of a challenge. So I hope when they're informed of their reappointment, we can stress that.
Okay, all right. Okay, perfect. Yes, yeah, if you could do that, Bree, that would be great. John, there are a couple of items on our agenda that was posted for the Zoom meeting that are a little different from the original. But we can certainly do.
Follow your follow your agenda.
All right, so that's so we'll be getting to that. But on the Zoom agenda, the next item is to vote to for the distinction between working meetings and in our regular meetings. So, John, what did you think about the language that Mark came up with?
Quite frankly, let me start with an overall view. It seems like the last month or two, we have started to add a lot of protocols. We've got two pages of what we called operating principles. We've got three pages on social media policy. We've got five pages that's coming up on this agenda for code of conduct policy. And I just feel like this is kind of a solution looking for a problem. I'm still, I would rather see us not approve anything as far as this particular issue with the protocol on the working meetings. You know my position, I've made it clear. So I I have no reason to see anything in writing. So I'm going to let you two decide what you want to do. And if you want to go forward, that's up to you.
Okay, all right, thanks, John. All right, Mark, I had your language and I liked it the the way that you had it written. My only suggestion would be rather than topic, it might be like a matter, because sometimes it's not really a topic. It might be an issue or or, you know, not necessarily a topic that that we were discussing.
I total agreement with that. It gets rid of a sort of grammatical thing with the extra parentheses. And I I hear what John is saying, and I take kind of a different approach, that we've never had a handbook or a manual collecting a lot of our policies and regulations and principles. I really like that we're kind of defining what a working meeting is. And I particularly like that within the framework of complete transparency, we are beginning to define a kind of meeting that's a little bit different. And I strongly believe we need we need as best we can to protect that with the language we've put forth here. So I'm very comfortable with moving forward.
Well, the only issue, I don't think a working meeting is anywhere in the state regulation. And I think an open meeting is an open meeting. I would like to see it posted and recorded. I know that the ground rules say that if it's in the minutes, it's legal. But I just and I and I feel a little uncomfortable saying it's courtesy. I think it should be a given that we're going to post them and record them. So I'm done.
Well, John, these are posted public meetings, so the press is certainly welcome to attend. The only difference between this meeting and our regular meeting is that it's not recorded. That's the only difference.
That's what I just said. I think they all should be recorded.
You made it seem like it wasn't posted either. This is just a public meeting that's not recorded. That's the only difference. We still do minutes. We post the minutes. Everything is approved in the same manner. There's an agenda that would be posted. It's just not recorded. That's the only difference.
And and just a reminder, it is a part of open meeting law that anyone, if they announce it, anyone can record any meeting they want.
Okay, so we've got Mark's proposed language to define a working meeting, which is not something we do very often, but occasionally the an issue arises that that it's best handled in a a non-recorded meeting setting. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt Mark's language with that minor amendment that I suggested. All right, so we have a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so that one, we're done with. All right, so moving on, now we've got the the tax title land. And that is. Why don't we have everybody on the call? The two phone numbers identify themselves, so we know who's all on the call. So well, we'll go around the horn. I'm Christine Joy, Board of Selectmen.
John Trainer, Board of Selectmen.
Mark Russo, Board of Selectmen.
Liz Dennehy, Town Administrator.
Delman Alte, County Planning Council.
John Wilhamsen, Town Properties Committee.
Bree, I can see you. All right.
Hi, it's Bree Jack, Board of Selectmen Assistant.
Thank you, Bree. All right, so we've got two. We've got a Galaxy A11 and a phone number, 760.
Yeah, that's me. Christine Rick Springer, Quanlawn Board of Selectmen, and now just private citizen.
Great, thanks, Rick. Okay, and who's Galaxy A11? Looks like they're trying to connect. I don't even know if they're connected.
I have a Galaxy A11, maybe that's.
Yeah, maybe that. No, 3206 is the one you're talking on now, but there's a A11 that says connecting to audio. So.
I don't know what that is.
Okay, all right, so this is our time to discuss the the tax title land that have been identified and reviewed by Open Space and Conservation Commission, as well as the Town Properties Committee. So I believe the plan was to go through these properties one by one and take a vote, or even in in batches possibly, too, as to what our recommendation was going to be with the the properties. So John Wilhamsen or John Trainer, did you have anything you wanted to say on this from the Town Properties Committee perspective?
I think we're in agreement, John, that we're not in favor of selling any of these properties, but.
No, that's correct, based on the discussion that we had had in our last meeting before that. Yep.
Okay, so do you want to speak to the particular properties when we get to the the last ones that had no comment by Open Space or Concom? Or did you just want to say now you're not in favor of the town selling any of those properties?
Yeah, I think at the at the present time, we weren't, the committee was not in favor of selling any of the properties.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Rick, what's your question?
My question is why they were not in favor of selling any properties, particularly if it doesn't have any municipal use or benefit to the community in a whole. I mean, what is what is the reason for keeping something off the tax rolls that has no use for the town? I don't understand as a citizen why we would do that.
John Wilhamsen, do you want to take that or John Trainer?
I can start, and John Trainer, certainly, or anyone else, feel free to jump in. But I think a couple of reasons. One, you know, these are not particularly high value properties as far as increasing the tax rolls. And I think, you know, so that's one. Two, you know, there are benefits to the town that go beyond the tax rolls in small properties, even where we have open space. And it provides for that ability. So I don't think it's totally of non-value to the town. And then I think the third piece is that I'm not sure that we're particularly in favor of selling properties whereby we're necessarily increasing the number of houses that we're adding in town, because the resulting tax benefit to the tax rolls is generally outweighed by the costs of that to the town.
Well, I disagree with that last statement, because, as you know, I've built many subdivisions in this town. The people move into these subdivisions, they they contribute to the community, they volunteer coaching, the the kids go to Denit. It's a wonderful community. It increases the viability of the community. By shutting down the door, by shutting the door and keeping everybody out, you're not helping the community. That's my opinion. Want to make a second point, though. The second point is that the abutting lot to the one that I have under, well, the abutting lot to the town-owned piece on Churchill Road, given a building permit in the 70s. The owners of that lot have been paying taxes of the town of Plumbton for almost 50 years. They cannot use that lot. Why would you, don't you think you have some moral obligation to make it right for them? By selling a piece of property that they can combine with their lot to recoup all the tax money they paid over the last 50 years? They were given a building permit based on what was going on at the time. No one checked into the zoning, and it went through. And they and they're paying taxes on it. And I just think that's immoral. I think that there's an obligation there to make it right, in my opinion.
Rick, John Trainer, I.
Yep.
The issue I have is it's partly what John said. Under the the law, if we were to sell this, it would not go from very much money. And yet, the idea that two lots can be combined and then put a house on it, and then we have to address the whole school system cost if people move in with children. I'm not sure why it's in the best interest of the town to do that.
But that, but John, that that argument has been proven wrong over the years. It has not, Denit Elementary has not, the population of this town, when I graduated from high school, was 700 people. The cost of sending kids to school since then has skyrocketed, yet Denit Elementary has remained the same. Their their overall budget and their overall number of students has basically remained the same. So we're one of the least, we're one of the least populated towns in Plymouth County. We have more open space than most towns around here. And I just think it's, I think it's a travesty to the people that bought that lot in good faith and now can't use it and paid all that tax money into the town.
Rick, we've got a whole list of properties. This is just one of those properties. So why don't we proceed? And then when we come to that that property that that you're here to talk about, if we want to talk about that one further, we can.
Okay.
All right, so.
Take them in groups?
Let's take them in groups, because we do have recommendations from Open Space and Conservation that they reviewed these and have recommendations to to keep a lot of these parcels as in open space or conservation land to continue to be protected.
Yeah, so it looks like they have on the recommended parcels for the town to retain. It looks here like one, so one on Center Street, one on Elm Street, one on Main Street, and one on Maple Street. So I don't know if you want to vote on those as a batch of whether or not to retain those properties or consider putting them up for auction, and then we could move on to the ones that they had no comments on.
Okay.
Liz, can you repeat that? Because I don't think I have the same, just repeat the streets.
Center Street, it's on page two of the.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Three of them are listed here as being on Elm Street.
Okay.
One on Main Street, and then one on Maple Street.
Fine, I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right. Mark, any questions or discussion on these three proper, or one, two, three, four, five, six properties?
I am not in favor of selling any of these properties.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendations of the Open Space and Conservation Commission and and follow their recommendations for the property. Center Street, 11-113, Elm Street, 16-3-20, Elm Street, 16-3-23, Elm Street, 16-3-25, Main Street, 4-114-A, and Maple Street, 7-2-14. Do we have a second?
That's a second not to sell?
Second to to not to sell and to follow the recommendations of Open Space or Conservation, whether they wanted them in Open Space or Conservation based on their recommendations.
I'm glad to second that.
Okay, all right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so now we're on to the parcels that they had no comment about. The first one is 1-3-12. That's on Grove Street. We've got a parcel, it doesn't say where the where it is, 4-3-17. There's a parcel on Maple Street, 7-2-25, another on Maple Street, 7-1-34, and 16-3-5, which is, looks like it has the address of 38 West Street. So I'm in.
There's one more on the next page, Christine.
Well, that's the one that that Rick's here for, so I don't know if we want to take that one separately.
No, there's one more.
Oh, thank you. So Prospect Road, 23-2-20.
23-3-20.
3-20, thank you. All right, so do we have a motion to take some type of action with with these properties?
I would move that we keep these properties and not sell them.
As town-owned land?
As town-owned land.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, so then we've got the parcel that Rick is here to discuss, and that's the 18-4-12, which is on Churchill Road. Rick has has made his case as to why he thinks that we should sell this at auction. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I've got a couple of questions for Rick, but Rick, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, one more point. The the thing is, you're collecting taxes on the abutting lot, which is 18-4-11, as a buildable lot. However, if it's combined, you will then be paying, collecting taxes on a home, which is substantially more. So to John's point, John Williamson's point about it's only going to bring a small amount of revenue is wrong. Going to bring in a substantial amount of revenue, because a new home will be taxed as a new home, which will create much more revenue than just the lot. So the revenue side of it, I don't agree with.
Okay. John, Mark, John?
You know, as far as the student cost at the Denit, a student is about $10,000. And that would have to be a pretty big home to be able to.
Yes. A single student. And I pay and I pay over $10,000 taxes in my home, and I don't have any kids in the Denit. So, yeah, chances are that, chances are that home will be taxed at $10,000.
And and the Denit, the Denit budget is is has not been stable for for a long time. You know, the Denit budget takes up over a third of the budget of the overall town. And we have grown the staff at the Denit in order to meet the needs of students there. So there are, there are costs, and there are cost implications to that. And we can certainly have a difference of opinion, but.
Yeah, but I, I really don't, yeah, but I don't really think that's a legitimate argument. It's an anti-development, it's a snob zoning type argument, and it's been put down in other towns. That's why 40B exists. Dover versus, you know, Town of Dover versus the development, that's how 40B was created. And you're denying, people want homes, people want homes in Plumbton. You can see that. Homes go on on the market, they're sold at astronomical prices, more than I ever would have thought. However, the demand is there. And you're denying people the right to have a home for no good reason. It really is not a good reason, in my opinion.
Rick, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
So did the the person that owns the lot at 17, is it 2-11, is that the abutting lot?
Yeah, 18-4-11.
18-. Okay, so they got a permit in the 70s to build a house.
Correct.
Do you know why they didn't? What, okay, so they never started it. So are, is it true that building permits aren't grandfathered? Did they they run out of time?
They are not. They run out in two years. You have to start within two years.
Okay.
And they didn't start. They did have a border health permit, and they did have a a building permit, but they never started. You know, you got to remember this, well, some of you remember the 70s. I remember the, we, you know, we, we were in a recession. So they probably decided, they were from Halifax, and they probably decided they couldn't afford it. The, you know, gas prices were skyrocketing, gas lines were all over the place. Maybe they didn't want to longer commute. I don't know. Anyway, the son owns the land now, owns the lot now. He lives in New Jersey. He has no interest in anything except getting his money back or getting some of it back. We'll never get it all back. But he's not gonna, I mean, he can't do anything with the land. If he if he stops paying taxes on it, the town's going to take it. And then you're gonna, you're gonna automatically merge it with the abutting lot, because it'll be under the same ownership. So, you know, this, there's some catch-22s there that I I think you're not considering.
So, Rick, another question for you. Is it possible, has, you know, the the person ever gone before the ZBA and tried to get a variance?
I, you know, I looked at that, because I've already. I, you know, I looked at that because I've already done the perk on the lot, and the lot already perks, we can fit everything on it, we don't have to worry about conservation, because we stay 100 feet away from the, from the wetlands, which is on the town-owned lot. The, the problem is, the attorney that did the title search told me that he said that the, the CBA, even if they rule that can be built on, will not hold, hold up if anybody ever challenged it. Because what happened was, when Dave Barrow developed this property and built Churchill Road, Bradford Road, there was no zoning. And then somebody came in and bought like four or five lots. And the, the lots on the other side, 18-4-10, and also on Upland Road, 18-4-7, were all purchased by the same person. Then zoning came in. At that point, those lots should have merged into the new zoning law, which was 150 feet of frontage and 40,000 square feet. And they didn't merge, he sold one out individually, basically illegally, but nobody picked it up. So the couple from Halifax that bought it went ahead and got a building permit from the town. Nobody picked up the fact that it didn't need zoning and it should have merged. So ZBA might be an option, but I was told it won't hold water if we put a house on it and the bank says, no, we can't, we can't give you a mortgage on this simply because the, the title here, and it should have merged. So that's, that's my hesitation.
Okay, it's my understanding that this last lot is pretty wet. It's, it's pretty much wetlands. And you're just looking to get this land so that you have the frontage, but you really can't build on this additional property, correct?
No, correct, correct. There's a wet one that goes from the, the back corner of the lot to the front corner. From the right back corner to the left front corner, there's a wet one. There's a, there's a stream that runs down through it, or a brook or a ditch or something. So yeah, you'd have to file with Conservation because you'd be working in that area. However, the two lots together would meet current zoning, which is 200 feet and 60,000. So therefore, the guy would be made whole again, the guy that owns the lot, 18-4-11. Now, the other two lots, you're, you're only taxing them at five, valuing them at $5,000 per lot because they never got a building permit. But those are in the same situation, they should have merged also, but they didn't. So, but those individual owners aren't willing to sell, so I, I don't know what to tell you, so.
All right, so this is just the, the two lots that, that your guy is, is working with, and it sounds like he's just looking to build a house. This isn't, he's not going to be living in Plimpton, is that correct?
No, correct, yeah. He would sell, he would sell the lot to my company, and we would, we would put up a house and sell it to anybody that wants, well, we know who we'd sell it to, somebody that wants to live in Plimpton in new construction. And that market is right now very, very strong. So whether it's a family, whether it's a retired couple, I have no idea who, who it's going to. But he, but he would recover the tax money, get rid of the lot without having it go into foreclosure because that's the only way he's ever going to get rid of the lot, in my opinion. I mean, I'll try the ZBA one more time. I mean, I'll try another attorney, maybe this is a possibility. But the last thing you want to do is put up a house and then not be able to have a mortgage company, you know, mortgage it, then, then what do you do with it? So, so that's, that's a conundrum there. But again, the, the lot itself is not valuable to the town. It, because it doesn't abut any other town property. It's useless as far as putting any, you'd never get a building permit for that particular lot that the town owns because of the wetlands and the size. You know, you got the same situation that I have next door. It's undersized, but on this one, the town owned, you've got to, somewhere these wetlands are, you never get a septic system in there.
Right. Mark, did you have some questions for Rick?
Well, I, no questions.
Or statements?
Yeah, comments. I, Rick, I, I hear you, and I think you've done a really good job of presenting the best argument you can. Nevertheless, for many reasons, I'm against selling this, this lot. I, I think it's a, obviously a small return or a small amount of money we get back. I, I continue to want to lean toward open space preservation, water resource protection. Plimpton, albeit not very populated and having a lot of open space, we still have one of the lowest percentages of protected land in the state. And I, I, I know it's an ongoing argument, but I'm very much on the side that towns tend to not do well in how much money they receive in tax revenue as versus what it costs to educate the people along the way. So I, I know that goes back and forth, but I, I appreciate Rick's arguments, but I, I'm against selling this lot.
Okay, so are we ready to, to make a motion? Mark, do you want to make a motion? Or John, do you want to make a motion on 18-4-12?
Yeah, I'm glad to make a motion that we do not at this time sell that lot.
All right. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second. Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Russo?
Let's see.
This is yes to not sell.
Yes, to not sell, yes.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Yes, and, and I'll agree with you guys on this one. Yes, I just don't think that this is the time to sell. Rick, I'd rather you try to get the ZBA variance and, and do it that way. And, you know, maybe if we need to look at this down the road, we could bring it up. But try to, try to go through the ZBA first.
Okay, okay, appreciate the time of the board members and the other committees that participated. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Rick. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right. So next item, how about if, since we've got Bill here, can we take the restriction of heavy truck traffic out of order?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, Bill. So we had met with, with you, gosh, it was probably, what, a month and a half, two months ago, maybe longer than that?
Yeah, a couple of months ago, probably.
Yeah. And we had talked about this after you guys had done your analysis of the road traffic. So this is something that we were interested in, it was learning how we could restrict the heavy truck traffic on non-state numbered routes.
Yeah, thanks, Christine. Yeah, so just to give you an update, so we did the, we did the traffic counts on a variety of, on several roadways in the town, Main Street, Ring Road, Went, Wentoxa, Prospect and Pleasant. And we're looking at a couple of different things. First, we're looking at the safety speed zoning, but then we started to look at the ways to reduce truck traffic through the town as well. And so looking at Route 58 and like the east, east of Route 58 and west of Route 58, east, east of Route 58, there's more options for restricting heavy commercial truck traffic through that town, particularly traffic that might be cutting between Route 58, Route 106. So the town does have the option, well, all towns have the option of, on roadways that are under their local jurisdiction and aren't state-numbered routes, to request a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion from Mastod, pen, assuming that it meets certain criteria. So one of them is warranted, that they look for generally a roadway that, if it has a percentage of heavy vehicle traffic, at least 5%, that tends to be the threshold that they consider. Another big one is, is an alternative route for, through moving trucks. And so looking at the, looking at the roadway network in Plimpton and all the data that we collected, we realized that, that there is a option that the town could consider for requesting heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Main Street from basically between Route 58, Route 106. But then you'd also, since, since Ring Road connects into that, you would have to exclude Ring Road as well. And that, that might be the, the biggest, almost, I don't even want to say obstacles, just procedural step that the town of Plimpton would have to take because Ring Road does cross into Kingston, so Kingston would have to sign off on that. And from what, you know, from everything I could tell, it would benefit Kingston to do so. I, I think, you know, they, they would be just as appreciative on protecting that side of the, that roadway on their side of the town as, as Plimpton would be. So basically, your options are Main Street, that section between Route 58, Route 106, Ring Road, Crescent Street, and, and Upland. So the, if, we've already begun doing the analysis for this, so from our standpoint, we would help the town. We, we've already done that data collection, so, and then, you know, the other piece that the state would look for is mapping. They, they want to see where the proposed truck, truck exclusions would be and where the preferred alternate route for trucks. And then in this case, the preferred alternate route would be to keeping trucks on Route 58, Route 106, keeping them off, keeping them off that piece of Main Street. So that's where we are right now, we're working on that. One thing about truck exclusions, so if a truck, a trucking company does have business on that roadway, let's say, say a landscaping company with a trailer or, you know, a furniture delivery, like a, to a residence, a large truck, the, the, if a truck has a business on that roadway, they can still use that roadway, so that's, that's the question that we often get. It's just through moving trucks. So it'd be a, a truck traveling basically between Route 58, Route 106 that wants to use those, wants to use those other roadways as a shortcut, so to speak. It would keep them off those roadways and keep them on the state-numbered route. The state-numbered route is better suited for, for trucks and a variety of, for a variety of reasons. It's lane, the pavement's a little bit better, the, the lane structure's better, and plus, you know, residents generally expects trucks to stay on the state-numbered routes.
So I just had a couple of questions. If for some reason, if we pursued adding Ring Road to it, and for some reason the town of Kingston was unwilling to sign off on that, are we able to still proceed with the other roadways that you outlined and just leave Ring Road out of our proposal? Or could we do a portion of Ring Road?
Yeah, you, you probably could, I'd have to look at, we'd have to do some GIS mapping of that, but the big thing would be, so trucks, trucks that were, say, coming from Kingston on Ring Road into Plimpton, they would need a place to turn off of, so that, that would be the biggest thing that we'd look for.
Okay.
But, but otherwise, yeah, there'd be options to do that. And we'll, we'll certainly look at all the options.
Okay, and then my other question was regarding enforcement. You know, say for instance, residents are calling the townhouse and they keep reporting, you know, a certain vehicle or, I don't know, like a certain company, for instance, oh, we keep seeing so-and-so's company trucks after the exclusion has been enacted. Is that something that our local police department could enforce or?
Yep, so generally, what other towns in the region have done when they've done these exclusions, so usually if the police department sees a truck traveling that roadway, that they might stop it and they might give them a courtesy warning, say, hey, you know, you realize you're on a, a truck exclusion route. Most, most trucking companies won't do it because when you request that permit from Mastod and it gets, gets approved, it goes into a database of truck, truck exclusions in the state. And most, most of the GPS systems that these trucking companies are using are tied into that. So trucks will, truck drivers will automatically know that they can't use this roadway because their, their routing system and their truck's gonna keep them on the state-numbered route. Whereas right now, a truck driver might, you know, their GPS might be drive, pointing them up Ring Road to cut between.
Right.
So, but yeah, it's, it would be up to the local police department to enforce. A standard truck exclusion's a lot easier to enforce than a weight exclusion. Some, some towns pursue weight exclusions when there's a, or weight limits, I should say, when there's a, like a culvert in, in question or a bridge. That, that's a little more difficult to enforce because then they, the officer that stops the vehicle, they, they have to be able to assess how heavy, how heavy that vehicle is, and that, that becomes trickier. But a standard truck exclusion, they're going to look at the number of axles, they're going to look at the number of tires, and that, that determines what a violation is.
Right, all right. Any more questions for Bill?
Yeah, so a couple of questions. West of 58, probably much less chance to do anything because of a lack of alternate routes is.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I meant to talk more about that, I kind of skipped over, but yeah, west of Route 58, so, you know, when it texts it and Prospect and all that, yeah, there's a lack of an alternate route. That, that tends to be a, a long connection between the interchange with 44 and 105 down there. So yeah, the lack of the alternate route would be the biggest obstacle there.
And so are, are next steps in, in your hands, or are we waiting for you for instructions of how to get this done?
So, yeah. Bill came, he said, we are ready to help you guys. And I said, well, let's talk about it as a board and see if, if the board wants to pursue this. And yeah, OCPC and Bill are ready to, to do whatever they need to do to help us make this happen. So they just need to vote of us.
Great, I'm enthusiastically in favor of it, if only Main Street for the extra two minutes, the number of trucks that turn off of 106 come down Main Street into town instead of going over to 58. That alone would be really helpful. So I'm vigorously in favor of this.
I do have a question on Ring Road. We have a farm operation that has very large trucks leaving from there and going Ring, Ring Road, staying in Plimpton all the way. But coming and going, the speed on Crescent Street or Ring Road, can we put in any, I'm in favor of everything you said, but I'm just wondering, can we also tamp that down a little? Is there any way that we can, or do we just go to the owner and say, look, we've got a little problem here, and we, please, maybe give him a ticket once in a while?
So the, the question is, reduce the number, number of truck trips, or the.
More the speed of the trucks.
Yeah, so it, unfortunately, you know, we've been asked this as well, can you have, you know, you know, a different speed for a heavy vehicle? You really can't, the speed limit applies to all vehicles. You, you can talk to, if the town has a good relationship with the farming operation, you can talk to them and say, hey, you know, could you, you know, maybe not drive so fast on this road? But, but yeah, it's, whatever the speed limit is, that, that would also apply to the trucks.
It is a concern because the school is on that road.
Yep.
I'm also in favor.
All right, John Wilkinson, you're with us. Do you have anything, any comments?
I think it's, I think it makes a lot of sense. You know, there's, there's really very little reason why they need to, you know, negotiating a couple of those curves and a lot of streets that are coming in and out along Main Street when they could go down 58. You know, it's, it's, it's a nice clean one, it would be nice to be able to do something with Prospect, but there's a long distance between the Plimpton line and Route 105. And, and I think you'd have issues there simply because you have the, you have the dump there. That Middleborough wouldn't be in favor of sort of stopping it at 105. So I think we, you know, I think it's, it's worthwhile, and it also would stop the, you know, all the trucks that you hear breaking up here at the intersection that they're coming up that way. So that would be better and smoother.
Okay, do we have a motion to, to pursue restriction of heavy truck traffic on the area of, what is it, Main Street, it's Crescent Street, Upland? And let's pursue Ring Road and maybe work with Kingston, see if we can make that happen. And if it doesn't, we can just drop it off the list and maybe look at it, doing a safety zone or something to, to slow people down. And if it doesn't, we can just drop it off the list and maybe look at it doing a safety zone or something to slow people down.
I'm glad to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion, a second roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Very good. All right. Bill, we wanted to do this. I don't know how quickly you can gather the documentation because I think we have to work with the the DOT on this as well. And you said that you would help us with that piece too.
Yep. Yeah, we've already started working on it. So it shouldn't be that much of a turnaround. So.
Great. All right. So just keep us informed as to what we need to do and we're here to help whatever you need to make it happen.
All right.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks for joining.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now back onto the order of events here. So our next item is the Maya Code of Conduct to consider adopting the the Code of Conduct that Maya has come up with. And this is for elected and appointed officials.
So maybe that's mine to start. So the Mass Municipal Association, just a bit of review. MMA on May 12th had a joint training with Maya on civility and code of conduct. And John Trainer and I both attended that. Really, the big punchline in that is promoting a proper code of conduct. The key was having a code of conduct policy. The day after that training, which was really well attended, I think it were several hundred people maybe at that.
I think it was closer to 500.
Yeah, I think it was 400. I didn't want to exaggerate. The next day, we, those of us that attended received the slide deck and also a sample Maya Code of Conduct and also a sample Code of Conduct from the Mass Municipal Managers Association. I shared that on the 14th with Liz and and the Board of Selectmen. The the goal here is creating a code of conduct, something that all elected and appointed officials would receive when they're sworn in and when they're re sworn in and would sign a document that they've received and they agree to it. Essentially, it would, it delineates proper conduct for town employees and volunteers in terms of relation with the community, in relation with other elected officials, in relation with the town manager, in relation with the town staff. I, in looking at the documents that were shared with us, these two sample code of ethics, I really liked the Maya one in that it was shorter, really clean, I think concise and precise language. I liked it much more than the Mass Municipal Association one. And so my suggestion is that we adopt this. It becomes an education tool. It also becomes a tool that can be used when things don't go well as they should to direct and guide and offer feedback and even coach staff, employees and volunteers and on how to do things a little bit better. So I think just as we receive when we are sworn in or re sworn in the sexual harassment policy and other policies, this would be one more policy, clear, simple. And I think a really good piece in reminding people that work for the town how we'd like them to behave.
John, do you have any thoughts?
I do. Unfortunately. I sat through that training and I came away, came away thinking they did a really good job of outlining the issues that were they were facing. But I also came away thinking that before we approve something like this, we should have that same training via Zoom or whatever so that people can buy into this. I think this is very inclusive and it also raises questions about who decides what's appropriate. I can see this also, in a sense, suppressing volunteers in that we've got about eight to 10 pages of documents that they have to sign and approve when they become a member of a board or a commission. And this town is built on volunteers. I think the intent is valid, but I think we ought to spend more time before we just go ahead and prove it and get buy-in from the various boards and commissions that are there now. I would suggest that we we have the training, let them have a couple of dates that they can sit through what Mark and I did. It's available. At the same time, I would, I would circulate this to the boards and commissions now, whether we do it upfront or after the training to say, you know, we need your feedback because it's not just the three of us that are affected. It's everybody. It's right across the school committees, the, all the different commissions we have. And I, I really think we shouldn't just layer this in without taking some time and working it through. I also, and then I have, you know, beside who's going to own this? Is it the town clerk? That's where the other policies reside in sexual harassment, et cetera, open meeting law. We got to make sure that that's bought into too. So I would like to see us take more time and try to get a broad consensus that this is the way the town wants to go.
And if I might, just a couple of comments on that. Yeah, absolutely. It would be the town clerk that would own it in terms of this being an integral part of the signing in process. In terms of training, yes, absolutely. I would love for everyone that signed in or resigned in to take the same training we did. In terms of buy-in, I disagree on that. If people cannot buy into this document, then they should not be representing the town. This isn't, I don't think we're looking for consensus on this. We're looking for a particular way that people who represent Plumpton act.
Well, that may be your view, but I think you're layering something that other people might not feel the same way you do. And I think we, before we vote this, we should first do the training and then get the, go the route. I'm concerned about on some of these points, who makes the decision that the action is inappropriate?
And that tends to be the reporting authority. This document, as was discussed in the training, gives the town manager some opportunity to deal with coaching or giving feedback, even if people don't report directly to the town manager.
But in effect, Mark, we have that now. Well, we're very supportive of what the town administrator does.
Which is why I think it should be written down. I mean, John, it's a little like the sexual harassment policy. In no way did we seek consensus on that. That's the policy. And it's the policy in part because it reflects what the law is.
That's exactly right. It reflects the law. This is not necessarily the law. And that's why I think we ought to have buy-in. All I'm asking is that we reach out to all our boards and commissions and say, look, this is a route we want to go. We want you to go through this training and then we want to vote this in. We want your consensus. I personally don't want to vote to drop this on them.
Well, I would like their consensus too, but I would be willing to drop it on them if they didn't agree because I think we need something. I think we need a code of conduct, whether it's this or something else. Just because I think it spells it out for everybody. What's the expected behavior? And
But that's the point, Christine. The municipal one that Mark didn't like is another alternative. It's not that different. You know, I mean.
Well, why couldn't we do some training with people having the understanding that it's our intent to adopt a code of conduct policy? And this is the policy that we're looking at. And, you know, they're welcome to provide some comments or feedback, but that that's our intent. And then we can cross that bridge, you know, when we get their feedback and and put this maybe on a meeting in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Would you be okay with that?
Yep.
With just scheduling the training and letting them know it's our intent to adopt this and solicit some feedback and go from there. I can't imagine anybody having a problem with it who you know, who is serving the town. I just can't imagine that that would be an issue. But yeah, so Liz, why don't we do that? We'll schedule a training with with the elected and appointed officials and let them know that's our intent to adopt it. And and then maybe we can discuss this. I don't know if two weeks probably doesn't give you enough time to get that done.
I think the training lasts for, it goes for a few hours, correct?
I think it's an hour and a half, wasn't it?
Yeah, the one we attended was an hour and a half. The other piece on that, Maya may have other training tools and it might be worth just checking with them on that.
Why don't we check in with them and then give people, I think giving them a month and have them self-certify that they participated. And then maybe if you took this up again at one of your meetings in August.
Very good.
I like that too.
Yeah, we have a lot with closing things out and everything. And I also think for some of our volunteer board members, especially as we're kind of coming into the summer months, it might be difficult for some of the volunteers to kind of carve out the time. So I think if we give them a month, that's fair.
Okay.
It might even be five or six weeks. I mean, I'd like them enough time that they really can do it. But yeah, I think that'd be great and I'd be glad to revisit in August.
If the training ends up being 90 minutes, I think they need more time. That's a long training.
It's a long time, I think, to ask anybody to sit there. Obviously, paid town employees is a different story, but to ask a volunteer to plant themselves in front of a computer for 90 minutes, if we want them to honestly get something out of it, I think giving them more time. I believe that the training, both Mark and John, I think you had sent me the link for it. I'll see if that's able to be sent out and then maybe people could do it kind of at their own pace and sort of come back to it.
I think that one was, I think that was one hour too. And it was good. I mean, it covered enough stuff that people would know it.
And then if we put it on for the first or even the second meeting in August, then it just lets people know, you know, we need you to do this, but do it on your own time.
Yeah. And that's valuable. If it was an hour and a half, see if they have something that's more condensed.
Yeah, actually, the the hour and a half could have been condensed to an hour. The good thing that made it powerful in my mind was that they had a town manager. I forget which town it was now, Mark, but I thought his.
I think it was.
Yeah, I think you probably, his input was realistic. You know, he had lived through a lot of this. So I felt he did a good job of explaining why it was appropriate.
Yep. Agreed.
Great. All right. That sounds like a good plan. Liz, to go back to the the town properties, are you going to let Christine know what the plan is so that I mean, there's really nothing she needs to do. It looks like it's more of designating properties as either conservation or open space.
Right. I'll report back to her what transpired tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda adoption. I asked for this one. And what it is, it's it's a type of an agenda where items like for tonight's, for example, on tonight's agenda, what we would have done is we would have created a consent agenda that would have included the warrants paid, the the reappointments that John read. It would have included, that actually might have been it. So there wouldn't have been a huge gain on this one.
Can you do minutes too?
Yeah. Thanks, Liz. Yeah, we could have done the minute. So it's anything that you've gotten ahead of time, something we've talked about before, just items that are really just, you know, standard operating procedure, things that we need to do. So rather than having to do roll call vote and spend a lot of time going through these items, there, what, let me see, what I would say at the beginning of the meeting is that I would say, you know, you've seen the consent agenda. Do you have any items on that agenda that you'd rather have, that you'd like to have moved to the regular agenda? So if there was something you wanted to discuss that was on the consent agenda that you either had a question about it or you didn't, you weren't going to approve it, you would call it out, we'd move it to the regular agenda. And then what we would do is we would adopt the items that were on the consent agenda and move on then to the regular agenda. So you're not spending as much time. So I'm not sure if it's something that's going to be, you know, a huge win for us or if it's something we even wanted to do. But we're actually looking to do this at Old Colony Planning Council because we have so many things that we're we're looking at and we get everything ahead of time and we don't really need to discuss it because we're getting, it's, you know, the budgets and just minutes and proposals and things that we've all read ahead of time or we've talked about on numerous occasions. So that's why I asked to have it considered.
I've used consent agendas extensively with one or more other organizations and I think they can be very useful. Ours may just be, you know, just a couple of minutes sometimes or a few minutes. And we all have the potential to ask for more discussion, but I think this is a great idea. I don't think it'll save too much time, but if we save five minutes, it's five minutes to do something else.
If, for instance, we had corrections to the minutes, you know, grammatical, let's say, do we have to call them out to then correct that?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, I'm not opposed to it. I don't know whether it's going to do anything for us, but I'd like to test drive it for six months and see where we feel we are.
All right. So let's, let's do that. So I believe that I have to make a motion that a consent agenda may be presented at the beginning of the meeting. Items may be removed from the agenda on the request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by general consent without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the assembly. So I make a motion that will give the consent agenda a test ride.
For six months.
Okay, for six months. All right. And we have a second for Mr. Russo. Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So we'll give it a whirl, see how it works out. Next item is the 960 waiver. And I don't know if this is still an issue, Liz.
It sounds like the chief is going to be all set for the rest of this calendar here if what he indicated is correct. He is requesting that the board consider voting this evening to basically reinvigorate the legislation last time. That was the petition that was approved by town meeting. And then it went to the State House and didn't really go anywhere. And that would have been for the waiver of the 960 hours and basically some of those other requirements that come with him being a retiree. It's his understanding that a piece of legislation like that, that you basically have to try to get it passed. So he is requesting that the board consider working with council on that we try to get that going again.
Any thoughts?
Yeah. I think I would ask, I'm not opposed to trying again. I think if we try again without doing a little investigation work, it's just going to fail. Liz, if you could maybe reach out to Senator Brady and Kathy Lanatra just to get a lay of the land. I'd still like to go forward, but I'd like to know, are there some roadblocks that maybe we can work? You know, before this just gets terminated in some House committee somewhere.
Yeah, that's fair. John, there was a provision of this that they didn't like, and I can share that with with all of you. I'm not going to share it right now, but there was a major stumbling block for them. And if we brought it back as is, they would reject it again. So I think that needs to be addressed.
How do you want to do that? Can we go through Liz? Can you share it with Liz and she shares it with us?
Yeah, and then I can maybe go to council, depending on what that is, if it's like a totally fatal flaw that we can't rework the language somehow. And it also is kind of. rework the language somehow. And it also is kind of hinging too on that town meeting vote. You can't deviate too much from the town meeting vote, but I do believe from what I recall that there's a little bit of play with that. So we can certainly, Christine and I can communicate and then maybe talk with council and find out if there is a way to reinvigorate it and how we might do that. I know they were successful with it in Braintree, but I was told, I was not made aware of the specifics, what the issues were, but I was told that it was more or less dead on arrival. So you know, I think it might be worth pursuing if we're able to rework it a little bit.
And I'm okay with that, as long as we're not spinning our wheels. And if it looks like we're spinning our wheels, then to heck with it. But if there's a chance, good.
I don't think it'll take long to determine if we're spinning our wheels.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, all right. So Liz, why don't, I'll reach out to you and I'll provide you with what I've got. And then we can start the ball rolling to see if this is something that will be feasible or not.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, so next item is to vote to adopt remote participation provisions pursuant to 960 CMR 29.10.
Maybe I, maybe I made that recommendation along the way. My understanding is we simply have to vote to do that. All committees, boards, and commissions would then have the option for a non-quorum of members to participate remotely. I have high hopes to participate from all kinds of really cool places every once in a while. And and it's kind of a nonentity now that we have another six months of Zoom before us. But it's before us and seems like a simple thing to vote for and just have that in our quiver of tricks along the way.
I don't see any problem with it.
Does this require us to do like a hybrid? Or can we just kind of doing what we're doing?
No hybrid. It wouldn't pertain to BOS so much because we're sticking with the remote meetings for the time being. But say, for instance, the planning board who meets in person because they're looking at large plan sets. Say, for instance, it's a five-member board, so potentially up to two of those members could participate in the meeting remotely, like could call in or zoom in or however they want to work that, and not be present at the physical meeting location. Whoever is chairing the meeting needs to be at the posted physical location. It doesn't have to necessarily be the chairperson, but somebody who's designated by the chair, if the chair is going to take advantage of this. And there were kind of nine, or actually eight bullet points from KP Law that we could distribute out to the boards and committees. That's kind of the quick version Q and A for this. But that's it in a nutshell. It's more helpful, like obviously for us, if we're meeting on Zoom, Mark will participate already from like an exotic location. But say, for instance, our boards that might be meeting in person, it's really more helpful for them, but it in no way requires a hybrid.
The the really, the the underlyingness, the really sweet part of it is I think it really helps volunteerism, particularly for some of our talented citizens that just can't be here on a particular night of a particular week. If they're on a business trip, they're going to be able to attend from wherever they are. And I I think that's really, really helpful, and I think might be attractive and attracting talented people to volunteer.
So would, I mean, this is going to really impact people like the planning board and ZBA. So do we have the technology to support remote and in-person at the same time at one meeting?
So we don't currently. We're working on that. John's actually working on that. But my understanding of this is that it doesn't necessarily have to be done on a Zoom platform. I'm just like reading as I'm talking. It can be. The only caveat is that the person participating remotely, so say the planning board is convening a meeting, and one of the members is on vacation somewhere, they can actually phone into the meeting, like they could be on their cell phone. And as long as they're on speakerphone, their their participation has to be audible by all of the board members physically in the room and any meeting participants. So that's the only thing is just making sure that the person is speaking loudly enough to be heard. I think I've only seen it done once in a prior place that I worked. And I think it was actually a selectman's meeting that somebody called in to somebody's cell phone, and they put the person on speakerphone, and it was for an important vote. And then the person just hung up when they were done.
I I think, Liz, though, this, I'm looking at the KP Law article six, I think it says, if a video platform such as Zoom, et cetera, is used, all members must be clearly visible.
Right, so they would have to be, if you're going to call in and set it up like Zoom, then it would need to be like this, that everybody can see it on the screen. We don't have that capability yet. So for us, it would be the person would phone in and need to be audible. So the first part of number six in the KP Law would apply. So it really just gives another option. Same thing, you know, if a zoning board member was in their car and couldn't make it to a meeting, they could phone in and be put on speakerphone, and as long as they were audible.
I think what it's going to lead to is, like the Board of Health, they meet in person. That'll just continue. Public hearings will probably be all in person until we get the technology in place. And that's going to take probably this calendar year to figure out, test, make sure everybody buys into it, and then start to go forward. So it's it's not going to be a quick process to do this.
And the only other piece, too, is if if a board were to enact that provision and have someone participating remotely, then any votes that that person participates in do need to be roll call votes. And it has to be documented like that in the minutes.
So we're not adopting this for the town, we're just adopting this for ourselves?
It's for the entire town.
Okay.
As the chief elected officials of the town, it would be a town-wide provision. It doesn't mean that boards have to use it.
Right.
But it should be available to them as another resource, another option, should they choose to.
Okay, got it. All right.
And I think John's exactly right. I mean, this is a stepwise process. We authorizing this, we still have a bunch of technology issues to work through. But we're just moving along.
I think it's helpful, too, considering this now and not waiting until, you know, the next few months are probably going to fly by, and then we'll be at a spot again where it's okay. The Zoom meetings are coming to an end for everybody. And I think it would be nice to have this already in place and adopted and not be trying to scramble at the 11th hour.
I agree.
All right, John Wilhamsen, you serve on many boards and commissions. What do you think?
I mean, we have a, we have a school committee member who would have had to significantly change his entire sort of setup of his job to have made it for the meetings for the first year that he was on the committee. The fact that we were in the middle of a pandemic and we're all on Zoom made it very easy for him. He is going to adjust as we go back to physical meetings. But I think it's, I think it's, like, I think it's the way forward. I mean, I think it would have been a harder vote a year and a half ago because we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the, we wouldn't have the proven technology and the proven ability of the meetings to function well. And it would have been more of that, yeah, the person on the cell phone that can't quite turn it up quite enough, you know, and the whole thing. But I think it's the right step to to be able to look at this, say, look, this is something we want to make available to try and gather some more volunteers, to try and make it easier for the existing volunteers to make meetings. It's much better if they make the meeting, even if it's remote. And work on making sure that we have plug-and-play technology so that if you hit one of our conference rooms, you know, you can just plug your computer in and it pops up with Zoom and the right camera and have that up. I mean, it's the way of, I think it's the way of the future. I think we're still going to want to meet in person. There's certain jobs that are going to need it. But to be able to give that flexibility, I I think it's key. And then as we get down, as we get down the road, you know, technology will continue to improve, whereby we may get to a point where doing a hybrid meeting is easy and doable. It's not now. It's not now, but but that's the point. If we move along these steps and we kind of push it, I think it's going to make it a lot better to have much more civic participation.
Great, okay. All right, so do we have a motion to vote to adopt remote participation provision pursuant to not, for, I'm sorry, 940 CMR 29.10?
So move.
Okay, second, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so we're going to adopt that. Okay, and then Liz, we've got the Plimpton Police Contract Agreement for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24 on the agenda.
Yes, so this would be a three-year agreement. Our current agreement with the police union expires on June 30. The main point in here is the cost of living. The agreement that we've come to with them is a two and a half, 3.0, two and a half. And that seems to be very reasonable and kind of in line with increases given to other municipal employees. It's also kind of in line somewhat with like, when you think about our cost of living adjustment, like this current year that we're in, it was 1.3. You know, adding a small merit raise on top of that. So those were the percentages for the three years. Then we also agreed, and when I say agreed, I mean, you know, kind of on a preliminary basis. Obviously, this board needs to approve it, and we do need the union to sign off. One of the other items that we came to an agreement on is a retention tool. Basically, it would allow an incentive where people could buy back two weeks, I'm just reading here, because there was a law, opt to cash out. So it's not a definite, but they would have the option after five years of continuous full-time service, they could opt to cash out two weeks, 10 days of sick time. And what that would do for us, it would be on their anniversary date, it's an incentive for them to stick around for a minimum of the five years. The other thing that's important to note here is that in the police union agreement already, longstanding in there, they already get a sick time buyout, which is rare. That's not the norm. Our contract employees, with the exception, I think, of the fire chiefs' contract, do not provide for sick leave buyout. Same thing for our wage and personnel. Police department does get that, and it costs the town a lot of money when you have somebody come in, they stick around for two or three years, and then they're out the door. This would hopefully help, number one, to kind of keep people grounded. It's another incentive to keep them working for us. But number two, it would hopefully ease the blow a little bit when people do leave from that department as far as not having to pay out some massive sum of money. You're not talking, oh, it's, you know, added up to six weeks of sick time. It's it's two weeks that gets taken away from that. So we just thought that that was a kind of a creative tool and something that was talked out amongst those of us that were negotiating. We're adding the Juneteenth holiday just for consistency purposes. It was adopted as a federal holiday. And then the other piece here was a longevity incentive. They already have something similar to this in the contract now. We wanted to modify it a little bit. So basically, it would be three years of continuous full-time service gets a 1% incentive annually. Six years is a one and a half, and 10 years would be a 2%. They had proposed that it would be paid out on their anniversary date. But for that one, we suggested the change, and they accepted that it would take effect on July 1 after the milestone is met based on the anniversary date of them being hired full-time. So if they worked part-time for a while, that doesn't count towards this. It has to be full-time, and it would be payable that first pay period after July 1. And then otherwise, there was something in there that the chief had wanted in regards to like personal grooming and like facial hair, and they agreed to that. So basically, what your vote this evening would do is allow us to move forward. We'll put everything together into the contract, the stuff that I've noted here this evening, and then we will get it around for signatures so that it can take effect July 1.
I have a little few questions. I'm a little confused about this sick pay buyout. Right now, they can, how does it work? And how does it change?
Right now, they get paid out for any accrued unused sick time.
Every year?
No, no, like when they separate from the town.
Okay, so and it accumulates?
Having with so many people leaving, we're constantly doing these like massive buyouts for people.
So it it accumulates, though?
It accumulates, yeah.
There's no, there's no cap?
They do have a cap. I can pull it up, but it's a little tricky because I'm on.
That's all right, but.
I can try to pull it up. There is a cap, but it's like kind of in in the distance cap. They can accumulate a lot of days.
Yeah.
A lot.
And how is this going to change it?
What this would help do is, number one, it gives them a little incentive to stick around. But number two, after five years of continuous full-time service, they'd be given the option to be paid out for up to two weeks of their sick time, thereby reducing the burden if they did leave us.
Okay.
It would kind of shave a little off. Nice bonus for them to get an extra two weeks of pay thrown in there after five years.
And then the.
Only be able to do it once. That's the other thing here. It's after five years of full-time continuous service. So this would be a one-time thing. It's not like every year they get to keep coming back.
No, so at 10 years, they don't get another five?
Correct, correct. It's it's just five years. You may get five years full-time continuous service. You have the option to buy out up to two weeks of your accrued unused sick time.
And the 1% or 1 and a half percent for longevity gets added to the merit increase and cost of living that they get anyways?
Correct, and I'm looking here, I just want to pull that section of the contract. So right now, we already give an incentive to offices, a longevity incentive to offices with five years of service, and then we do 10 years of service. This reduces the years of service a little bit. So it would be giving an incentive to three years, six years, and 10 years. And our hope is that by having a little bit of incentive in there, again, we're trying to retain people. So this seemed like something they were excited about, it not having to wait five years to get the longevity incentive. It reduces that timeframe to three years. They get the longevity incentives annually.
And you're okay with this, Christine? You you've been through this?
Yeah, I've been through it. I just wonder if with that 1% incentive, with that, those incentives, if we might be able to do the incentive before the COLA for the next year? That it's based on like the previous year's salary?
Fair, we can do that. It should be based, I I agree with you on that. And I can clarify that with them, too, and say that, you know, if you're inclined to approve it tonight, I'll say with that distinction that it be done prior to COLA, which would make sense, because you don't want them going into the next year, say it's, I don't know, year two of the agreement, and they're going to get a 3% COLA. We don't want the 1% or whatever it is on top. We want it prior.
And the incentive is, or the the payment is actually for the previous years of year of service anyway, the incentive, so, okay.
And they they'll get it on July 1 after the milestone is met.
Okay, which is three years?
Three years, and then there's an incentive for six years and then one for 10 years.
Okay, so it's the, it's not every year. They just get this at those three milestones. Okay, so it's, it's not every year. They just get this at those three milestones.
These, they had asked for it to be annual, but it would be based on the prior year's salary number.
Okay, so at three years, they get the 1%. At six years, so from three until six, they get the 1%. Okay, and then six to nine, it's the one and a half, and then nine up, it'd be the two.
Uh, yes.
Got it, okay.
And that's not additive. It's just, it changes from one and a half to two.
Correct, it's not, it becomes two and a half.
It doesn't, it doesn't build, no.
Yeah, it doesn't build.
Christine, I have one quick question. Question on, so my assumption is that because the sick time number of days is so high that we didn't look into taking that 10 days out because really what this is intended to do is to one, provide an incentive for the five years, but also to reduce those people that were losing at even six or seven years, the amount of cash buyout that we're going to have. And even though if you have someone who stays for a while, they may make back that extra two years up to their cap or the two weeks up to the cap. That's not really what this is geared towards. It's geared towards incentivization.
Correct. It's meant to be a retention tool.
And dulling the pain when we do have to pay it out for people that leave between five and eight years or something like that.
That's exactly it.
Two weeks, we've already paid it out ahead of time, not just dealing with.
Right, so it reduces the blow later on because we've had some very large buyouts. And the problem with that is that, and we've talked about this before. We'd even talked about funding, whether you could do an article or have a budget line or something. But there's really no legal way to do it and you also don't know. I mean, you might go a whole year and there are no large buyouts or anything like that. But this year especially, our police department in particular has been hit very hard with these buyouts and it's, there's no real way to plan for it. It's, it's a difficult situation. So this would help ease that a little bit and make it a little less painful if it does happen. But hopefully it's enough incentive along with everything else that we keep people around for a little bit.
You basically have a three, five, six, and 10-year incentive.
Yes.
So it's trying, it's trying to keep. And at that point, if they're here for 10, hopefully they'll stay.
That's what our hope was in kind of working through this. You know, we've had a lot of back and forth on it and this seems like honestly it would be a win-win for everybody.
We've had so much turnover in the department and the cost to get these guys trained and equipped is, is pretty extensive. And then, you know, we're starting all over again with, with every placement. So, yeah, and, and in the climate, it's so important to have good people working for the town.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's similar to the other things with teachers than it is in the business world. They say 12 to 18 months of salary is what it costs to bring a new person on. That's a huge hit, you know, it's just.
Yeah, that we're paying out of the budget at this point. So, yeah. All right, so that's the proposal. Any more questions, comments, concerns? And I should probably say that we're coming off several years of them taking a 0% increase because they wanted to work with the town and, and knew what our situation was. So, so they have been more than willing to work with us to make our, the budget work for the town.
So do we need a vote?
We do. So we need a motion to approve our, I guess, our, the contract.
Yes, approve the agreement for fiscal years 22, 23, and 24 between the town and the Plimpton Police MCOP Local Number 276.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, thanks Liz for, for breaking that one down. All right, so now we're on to town administrators' updates.
So, let's see here. So we signed the agreement between us and the town of Carver. And that is for animal control officer services as we discussed. It's for the next three years and it's $5,000 per year. So Carver will be handling all of our animal control issues. And the $5,000 is a really good deal for us. It's actually saving us about $4,500 annually. And they were more than willing to do that and help us out. And they're excited about it too because they have quite a few staff members for their animal control department, which is housed under their police department. So they're excited about it and Chief Clancy and their chief work very well together. So that's how we're proceeding with that. We also signed.
Excuse me, Liz?
Yeah.
Would they be using the Plimpton Animal Control Officer email?
No. No, we don't use that. We took that off the website. We're doing, we have the police department's phone number. And then we also let The Rock know. And so any calls for animal control go automatic to Carver.
Okay, great. I just wanted to know because I have the ACO with a Plimpton PD email.
Right, yeah, he, when he resigned, we stopped using that.
Liz, will they, will they report to us on incidents, the policy that we kind of put together?
They will. And they'll let the police chief know about anything too. But obviously if there was like a dog bite or something like that, then they would be required to follow all of the reporting required.
Yeah, it'd be good for us to know what's happening though.
Absolutely. So that's all set. We also signed the contract with The Rock for regional dispatch for this next fiscal year. That too, similar to ACO, is the amount that we voted at town meeting, 150,000. So that's all set for another year. I'm hoping that maybe next, like the following fiscal year, fiscal 23, that maybe it's a hair Hanover is fully on board with them. That's what I'm hearing is that if they take them on completely, that it might reduce our share. And they are their own department now. They're no longer under Duxbury Fire. They are a standalone department within the town. And Mike Mahoney, who runs the operation, seems to be doing a great job. Communications are always good with him. So they have a lot of exciting stuff going on over there. So I think we'll be well-served by them and we're all set at least for another year. All right, we're also trying to get some, just some, a lot of like end of the year stuff, both financially speaking. And then also with some outstanding grants and everything. So really it's just kind of the end of the fiscal year rush. Finance committee has a meeting coming up this week for a few reserve fund transfers that need to happen. And then I would say for our July 12 meeting, you should plan on seeing some of those customary line-to-line transfers that require both the vote of Board of Selectment and FINCOM. The town accountant should have those ready to go by then. And we also received nearly 145,000 in cares reimbursements. Kathy Lanatra dropped those checks off on Thursday. John Trainer was there and able to take possession of those. And those have been deposited. So we're going to try, I know we owe Silver Lake some money for some of their COVID expenses that we were committed to paying for. So we're trying to slowly get everything reconciled with that. So that was a good thing. And that's really it for my updates. And I don't have anything in correspondence. I don't know. Bree, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Liz, very much. All right, so on to the minutes. So we've got three sets of minutes. We've got May 17. We, and we've got regular session from June 7 and executive session from June 7. So why don't we start with the 17th? Any changes?
The only clarification I need is on the second page, the bottom where it says appointment. Baba Gomez as the administrative accountant. Did we have a termination date associated with that? It, it seems to be in my mind that we.
It's only a one-year agreement. I believe it goes through June 30 of 2022.
Okay, could we add that just so we're clear on that later? Other than that, I have no issue.
The only thing I had is, I think we have two lists of in attendance on that on the first page. At the top of the page and then two-thirds of the way down the.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, yep. All right. And I would suggest under disposition of town-owned land that we add to the last line, it reads, "The list of parcels will be reviewed by the Town Properties Committee, Treasurer Collector, and Board of Selectmen." And I would just add open space and conservation to those before Board of Selectmen. All right, any other changes? All right, hearing that, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from May 17 as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, John. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so Bree, I can get those to you if you'd like. And then we've got the, the open session. Actually, we're Mark, didn't we typically approve the executive session in an executive session?
Yeah, I think so. That way we can make any changes and discuss them.
So we'll hold those because they're not actually on the agenda anyway. All right, so the next sec, the next set of minutes is Monday, June 7. Any changes to those?
The, go ahead, John. You got it first.
Just a nit, it starts off Chairman Russo and I think it's Chairman, Chairwoman Joy.
Yeah, and the clerk part of that is, needs to be corrected too. Equally, right after 5:45, it says Chairman Russo and it should say Chairman Joy. And then lastly, two-thirds of the way down the way, we have a list of in attendance a second time.
Okay, I've got those. On, I think it's the second page, under the, the reappointments, I would suggest we add the list of the reappointments because it says we reviewed the list and of all the town or paid town employees appointed, that I, I read the list and the names and we made a motion, but they're not listed in here. So I would suggest we just list stuff.
Yeah, and I think that's required under the open meeting law.
Hello?
Hi, Bree.
I was going to attach that list to the minute.
Okay. I think that would work too.
So when it gets submitted for posting, it'll just show the list in what committee.
Okay, do you want to put in there something like, you know, C attachment or something?
Sure.
Perfect. Okay, so any other amendments? All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from June 7 as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, John. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo? Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so we've got the minutes accepted. Okay, Board of Selectmen raves. Anybody want to go first?
Well, I gotta rave for, as we get back to normal, the Council on Aging is having an ice cream social this Wednesday at the Old Town House. And I think they thought they were going to get 30 people. I believe it's over 60 now.
Oh, that's great.
I don't know where we're going to put them all, maybe out in the street, but it's, I'm looking forward to it. Should be a great time. And Kathy Lanatra said she'd drop by and serve ice cream.
All right, Mark, do you have one?
My rave's for the meeting, this meeting tonight. I think we got a lot done. Some gnarring issues or outstanding issues. And I think we cleaned up a lot of stuff efficiently and well, and I'm glad.
My rave would be selling stickers at the dump. I think that is a huge addition and I'm so glad that the highway superintendent is, is going to be offering that service. I think it's a great service to our residents that that we allow them or give them the ability to buy the stickers at the transfer station rather than having to go to the highway barn. So that's awesome.
That wasn't where that was happening. That's great.
Yeah, that is happening. Be careful what you ask for, John.
No, I'm just thinking, I. Do we have, Liz, I know we have cable there, but do we have the ability to email and everything out of the transfer station?
Let's do some background work and make sure that they're, everyone's on board and kind of up and running. I think we have until January for that.
Okay.
Sticker season is normally January through April. So I think that that gives us plenty of time to make sure that they have all of the resources necessary.
Well, if they can make that happen, I'm a happy camper.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so, good. Yeah, I'm not sure. Are they doing it now, Liz? Or I know it's intended. I don't know if it's actually started yet because it like, it's really isn't the season to be selling them, but they will.
Not to my knowledge.
But that's the intent, is to, to sell them at the transfer station. So, very good. All right. Yeah, so dates to remember, our next meeting will be on the 12th and then we meet on the 26th. And for future agenda items, maybe, I would suggest maybe on the 12th if possible to get an update on the, the safety zones and what is happening with that, with, from Rob and the painting and all that good stuff? Good.
I'd also like to see the priorities and projects on one of those dates.
Okay, so either the 12th or the 26th, depending on whatever, yeah, what else comes together. Okay. Mark, do you have anything you want to put on a future agenda?
Not yet.
Okay, awesome. All right, so that's all we've got for tonight. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor? Aye. All right, good night, everyone.
Night.
Have a good week.